I call the Marlington Local School District Board of Education regular meeting to order on October 1st, 2020 at 7 o'clock PM. If you could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
The reading of the mission statement is by Mr. Josh Hagan.
In collaboration with staff, community, parents, and students, the Marlington Local School District will develop lifelong learners who understand and apply knowledge and demonstrate excellence in pursuing the highest standards with effective intervention to challenge every student.
This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. Dr. Main, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Gabriel.
Here.
Mr. Hagan.
Here.
Ms. Humphries.
Here.
Dr. Mason.
Here.
Ms. Stevens.
Here.
Adoption of the meeting agenda, are there any additions or corrections?
None from me.
Patty, you're good?
We're good, we've got ours on there, thank you.
Okay. I recommend that the Marlington Local Board of Education adopt the following agenda for the October 1st, 2020 meeting, is there a motion?
No move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Gabriel.
Yes.
Ms. Hagan.
Yeah.
Ms. Humphries.
Yes.
Dr. Mason.
Yes.
Ms. Stevens.
Yes.
Crew 5-0, 5-0.
Public participation, Dr. Main, did you receive any documents for public participation for this evening?
We did not receive any documents or requests.
Okay, thank you. Special presentation, Students of the Month, Dr. Schuffler, would you like to recognize our students?
Yes, thank you and good evening, everybody. It's great that we begin our process this school year of recognizing some of our outstanding students at each board meeting. So tonight, I'm going to read the name of the student, the group that acknowledged them, and then their parents, and they will receive a little bit more recognition and a certificate at their school building. So, we're glad that we have this process started again, and I'm happy to continue it at the first board meeting of each month. So, we'll start with our high school Elk students, we appreciate the Elks and all they do for our community. We have Ella Deitchold and Brendan Hamilton, they're our Elk students. Ella is the daughter of Dax and Maria, and Brendan Hamilton is the daughter of Kurt and Gina Hamilton. Our Marlington Middle School Students of the Month, Madeline Bailey and Jacob Dine. Madeline is the daughter of Jared and Melinda Bailey, and Jacob Dine is the son of Richard and Carla Dine. Then from each elementary, we have the Kiwanis Student of the Month, again, thank you to the Kiwanis for all you do and for recognizing our students. Isaac Brusso is our Lexington Student of the Month, and he is the son of Marilyn Stanley and Jerry Fox. Michael Long is the Marlington Kiwanis Student of the Month, and he is the son of Ryan Long and Kathleen Long. And Sam Valverde is the Washington Elementary Kiwanis Student of the Month, and he is the son of Ruben Valverde and Amanda Valverde. So congratulations, students, and thank you for your outstanding accomplishments, and a little shout out to the parents, too. Thank you for sharing your students with us.
Thank you, and congratulations from the board as well. Do we have any old business this evening? Hearing none, new business? Do we have a separate discussion or just facilities, Dr. Mike, there's discussion and then facilities?
It's just, just a discussion on the facilities.
Okay, okay, I'll turn this over to you then, if you want to give a little introduction on this.
Sure, we have with us tonight, we have Will Luton and Scott Brennan from Plug Smart. Plug Smart is our construction company that led the construction and remodeling of Marlboro Elementary School. And we had asked the company if they would prepare what we're calling a little storybook, so that we could all get a little preview of what happened at that building and what we accomplished there. So, I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Will Luton and let him tell his story, Will.
Thank you, Dr. Mike. And to be honest, I'm going to be passing this off to Scott Brennan. Scott, as all of you have met before, is our COO, and he oversaw the project from start to finish and was intimately involved, connected to district staff on ensuring the successful project. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to you, Scott, to walk them through it and kind of give a, provide some context to some of the pictures we have.
All right. First and foremost, I want to check, everybody can hear me, okay, I'll just get one yes, all right. So, I really want to thank you for allowing us to present the storyline of the summer project at Marlboro this evening. This, this project coupled with the extraordinary efforts from Al, Trish, their teams, you know, really transformed Marlboro Elementary from a 20th century building into the 21st century. When the students returned for their first day of school, you know, they were welcomed by a bright, comfortable building being supported by a smart energy system. We have put together, as mentioned, a brief storybook to show how the, the project progressed and what the results were. What I'll say is this, this, this book is, you know, will, has a lot of meat to it, there's a long description about what the, we did. There's a nice narrative in the beginning, but we're going to get right into the meat and potatoes for the sake of time and, and talk about the scope of work and show you some progress pictures. So, as you can see per, on the document here, there was really three parts that made up this project that we did this summer. We had the lighting, we had the HVAC upgrades, and then we had the, the roof replacement. So, with the lighting retrofit, what we did was every single bulb within the building, you know, whether they're fluorescents or incandescents, even the emergency exit signs, were all replaced with bright, energy-efficient LED bulbs. We also carried this on to the exterior outside of the building as well, replacing the bulbs for all of your, your safety lights along the perimeter. Then we also had the HVAC upgrades, so we decommissioned the current, or the boiler system that was there that fed the steam heat for your, the two-story building to the unit vents, as well as some of your ancillary heaters with energy-efficient VRF systems that both provide heat and cooling, so that's new to the two-story building. As well as we replaced the units that provide heating and cooling now to the auditorium gym area. Once again, with very efficient units that will meet the demand for the, the auditorium as needed. And then finally, we had the roof replacement, so we had a couple sections of roof that were older than others, but we near and dear referred to them to A, B, C, and D. So you'll see some pictures of these buildings and, as well as the condition that they were in. What we did was we pretty much removed everything off down to the, to the decking of the, the roof, gave you an insulation of R25, and then provided an adherent 25-year 60-millimeter white membrane on the roof. So, not only do you get a, a nice warranty out of this, but with the white, the white membrane, it is also an energy-efficient solution. Next page. So, we're going to get a little bit into the story, this is what we'll call the picture book. I really like this picture to start off with, so this is an image of the second floor. Right when we're getting ready to open the doors up to the students, you know, a couple days before, you'll see it's, you know, very bright, you know, everything's nice, shiny, and new for the kids to come in and be excited and, and be a part of their new learning environment. So, we'll go ahead into the actual story itself. So, we're going to talk a little bit first about the lighting, I, I really like this first picture because it, because it gives you a sort of a, a sample of what the new looks like compared to the, what was existing. So, the most prominent part of that picture, up, up a little bit, right there, the most prominent part of that picture you'll see is, it's very bright, very white, that's the cafeteria area. We're still underway with the replacement, so you got to see a, a pretty good contrast of what was existing, which is the library in the back section, you'll notice the different color tone, a little bit dimmer of an area than what was up front. Once we were all done replacing all of the LEDs, I, I quite often found that either the teachers or Trish and the crew, they were turning off some of the, the banks of lights because there were more than what was needed, you know, for, for, for that, working in that area. So, again, it's a great story to show turning an area from, you know, we'll say, you know, dim to a nice, bright working condition for your students and teachers alike. Now, scroll down a little bit. This is another great contrasting picture, so here is in your gym auditorium area. The picture on the left, you'll notice we are underway with replacing the lights. Now, do note, the lights are off, yet you'll see the fixtures still look, you know, yellow-orange. Compared to the picture of the right, where, you know, a nice, bright gym, all the lights are on, no dim, dark spots. We did, uh, when we took down all the fixture lenses, we went through and fully cleaned them and took off all the grime, dirt, debris that had been there, you know, through the years that it caked on, and turned them back to a clear, nice, white color. So, once again, the gym is nice and bright, it's going to be great for your kids to be able to be in there and do their activities and have the parents in and, and watch all the shows with their students on stage, so again, very nice area. Next slide. So, we're going to start showing a little bit of the roof progress, so this is, uh, this is a image of the pre-existing roof over what we called Building A, and, and for everybody else, what that is, is the, the newer part of the building, the single-story area that I believe was built in around the 70s. So, this kind of gives you an idea of what the roof looked like, you know, we did have, we had areas where there was, you know, cracks in the membrane, saturation into the foam insulation underneath, and you'll see some images of that as we carry on. We can scroll down a little bit. Again, so it, snapshots of what we found as pre-existing, so this is one of the smaller roofs off the side of the building. This is off the backside of the gym. This other image here where we're showing the office roof drain, this, this is some of the stuff that we had found, you know, under the roof, things that you could not see under the, the substrate. And, and what we did with situations like this, for instance, with this dr, this drain that had collapsed, this drain with the support was rebuilt, all of the holes around it were, were replaced and fixed, and the drain and, as well as the lines were repaired and replaced, so that you have a watertight seal around the drain and all the water is going where it should, which is not inside the building. Next image. Again, some more pictures of us underway, this is a overlooking snap, snapshot of the, the building A again, showing where we're starting to load the materials up on the building and getting ready to do tear-off. The image to the right is, a, as we started tearing off the, I'm going to say the exposed layer, the surface layer, you know, this is where we started finding saturation within the foam and, and tearing it down to the, the metal decking. So, we got, we got rid of all of the saturated, I'm going to say, decomposed insulation and built up from new. Scroll down a little bit. So, this is showing some of the roof underway with, with us putting the new membrane on, so the image on the left, we're taking a picture, if you're, think of standing on the two-story part of the building and we're overlooking the, the gym. So, we're starting to get our brand-new, white, clean roof on and get ready for our rooftop units to be installed in, onto the gym. The image of the right is a final image of, again, the, the gym roof, as well as the, what we called the B roof, which you saw in a previous image, as well as giving you a kind of snapshot of what the new metal edging looks like along the perimeter of the building. We keep scrolling. So, this is where we get some really neat contrasting pictures, some good before and after pictures. So, this is getting into the replacement portion of our HVAC part of the job. So, this is room 103 prior to any of the demolition that we started doing in the room. So, you'll notice the big unit in the middle, that was your unit vent, that provided your, your, your heating and airflow, we'll call it. And then the unit to the left was a, just a heater for during your colder times of the year. Your next picture, the, to the left is a, is an image of that same room, but now with your, your new flooring in, the new heating and cooling unit on the floor there, you'll see it's non-intrusive, it's not, you know, it doesn't call itself out, it just tucks nicely into the room, but yet still gives you all of the capacity of heating and cooling to keep your, your students and teachers comfortable. The next image is probably one of my favorites here is room 202, which was on the, obviously, the second story of the, the building. This is a before, before image, so there was a lot of work that went into this room, and you're going to see that with the, with the next picture here. All right, yeah, right down there, it's, now it's bright, it's, it's sparkly, it's shiny, you have two units, you can see, that are towards the middle. As I said, they don't, they don't stand out, you know, they're not as, as large and pronounced as the, the original units were. But again, this is giving you a snapshot of what your students came to the first day of school, a, a, a nice, clean, comfortable, bright environment. Next picture. So, this picture here is showing you some of the, the units that we were bringing to the, to the roof. This is actually a rooftop unit for the gym, one of the two that went in. As you can see, a, a lot of work went into coordination to, to be able to get these units onto the roof. We had a crane that was, brought both rooftop units plus the other equipment that supported your VRF system. And we were able to get these rooftop units set on their curbs and ready for hookup within two days. So, it was a, it was a very, you know, huge effort, I think some of your, your staff were impressed with just the, the logistics around the crane and, and how we were able to get these units in such tight spaces. Next image. This is one I'm particular about, I, I believe, in, in clean, neat job, installation jobs. So, the image to the, to the left, all of that conduit, all that electrical installation is all new, that was, that was not there before. And what, you know, I would like to call out is the fact that, you know, you have very nice, neat, laid-out conduit to your new service panel that supplies the electricity to both the rooftop units, as well as to the units that support the VRFs. And then finally, the picture to the right is a, a sample of the roof, one of the rooftop units. Once again, you know, showing you a, a nice, new piece of equipment that, you know, is installed clean, all your gas lines are painted, you know, they, met, or meet today's standards, we also did the same on the existing gas lines for your, your existing roof on the A building. So, and not only, and what you don't see here, some of the magic behind the curtain, we'll say, is also the control system. So, with the installation of the rooftop units, along with the, the VRF system, we were able to bring your system on your, to your building controls application. So, that way, Al and his team have the ability to not only control the units remotely and, and make adjustments, but they can also monitor for alarms or any other issues that may be impactful to your building that, that are part of these systems here. So, with that, once again, you know, I want to thank everybody at Marlington, I want to thank the team at Marlington that I worked with, Trish and Al, your patience is, is much appreciated, and we, we applaud, thank you for the opportunity to be able to provide this to your students.
Great job, Scott, thank you so much, Scott and Will. You've been great partners for me already as well, in the short time I've been here, so, thank you for sharing. Maybe at this time, are there any comments from board members about the storybook?
I would just like to say it looks wonderful, thank you for all the hard work that went into it from, from you guys, from our staff, just everything. It's so awesome to be able to do this for our students and for our staff members, and I look forward to seeing what you guys will do later on with the other two buildings as well, so thank you again.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you guys as well, as well as the subcontractors, or, or Rain and Skies, and our custodians who also were working tirelessly to get that building ready. Thank you all very much.
I also want to thank you and our staff and everyone involved in the project. We're very impressed with the amount of work you were able to get done in such a very short time span that we gave you to work in, and we're grateful you were able to get that done for our students and our staff and, and the community is very grateful for such a nice building.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Will and Scott, if you wouldn't mind, would you stay on for another five or 10 minutes? And we'll talk a little bit more about some other facility updates?
Yeah, not a problem.
Okay, and then Ben will be putting up a, kind of a, an overview sheet for you, and while Ben is doing that, I wanted to tell you a couple of things for everybody, you know, watching and for all the board members. What, what I have tonight is just an overview, it's a very sketchy overview. But my thought is always, if we don't start talking about our vision and our future vision, continuing the vision, it'll never come to play, so we need to start and, you know, talk about these things. And I've had about three months with the district, so not a lot of time, but some time to talk to folks, talk to the Plug Smart folks, and kind of analyze a little bit what we think are the big facility needs that Marlington has. So, again, these are overviews, I've marked here what are documented estimates, that means we've received an estimate from Plug Smart or someone else, and then when we get to the couple that are not, I will tell you a little bit more about those. So, let me talk to you a little bit about, obviously, the remodeling of Lexington and Washington. I think that's been promised to the community, and we have some details about what will go into that project. There, what you have there, that 4 million, that's a range of what it will, might cost, I guess I left a comment out there, but four, between four, a little over four and a half million of what that project, that is both school buildings together. It's only for Plug Smart, it's not a best asbestos abatement, and there would be other few miscellaneous updates. Right now, as most of you know, interest rates are either all-time low or one of the all-time low. And now, interest rates depend on a lot of things, as everybody that's a homeowner knows. But we have districts in Ohio that are working with banks getting something like a 2.2, 2.5 interest rate. And there you have figures of what would be a 15-year, if we, a 15-year, what we're calling a lease purchase, and what would be the payment on a 10-year. Let me just say briefly, schools generally cannot take traditional loans and go into debt like a private person or company can. But we do have the option of doing something called a lease purchase, and that's where we are able to borrow some funds. So, I, I, just a comment, I'm by no means a financial expert, but in my experience, this low of an interest rate is barely keeping up with inflation. So, I guess what I'm saying is, this is a pretty good time in history to do something like this. These estimates also include some windows that were not done at Marlboro. And I did find out that borrowing less or paying off early depends on the bank. But I do know that some of our friends not so far from us worked with the bank, they got like a 2.2% interest, and they, they made a deal with the bank that there would be no penalty to pay off early. So, tho, those are a, a little bit of the, the information on those two buildings. The, and these are kind of in, sort of kind of in order of what I think we should probably prioritize. So, Ben, if you want to go up a little bit, our buildings do not have electronic access, and some of you may know that electronic af, access depends a lot on the doors. The door is the hugest expense of an electronic access. So, what, between what we've done and what we will do, I believe the doors that we need will be ready for electronic access. So, what I'm talking about, that's where you go with a little fob or a little disc that's on your ID, and then you are able to get in. Not every door would have this access, but some doors at every building would have this access. We know that the high school and the system to run this access was, the last quote we got was around $5,000. So, this is not a huge expense. The other buildings, now this would be Marlboro and the middle school, I was figuring maybe about the same. And then I talked to Will about, as we do Lexington and Washington, we would do the electronic access in the project. So, I'm not, I don't think anybody's quite sure why we didn't do that at Marlboro, but it sort of makes sense. While we're upgrading, now this would be the time to put those things in. And this is right on a computerized system, Ben, more than likely would be our person, and we can give access, take access, people can have limited access, so it's, it's a good system, I, I've worked with these systems before. They help with safety, getting into building rapidly, our first responders would have fob access so that they can get right in, those types of things. Then, if you want to go up a little bit, and then we'll, we'll have, obviously, time for questions when we come to the end. Our phone system is, I thought it was important to put this out there, and you may imagine, this is not the type of phone system that you would have in your home, it's a phone system that connects all of our buildings, it takes care of voicemail and a number of other things. The system we have is not voiceover IP. Um, the system we have is not voiceover IP. And it's really, quite frankly, it's at the end of its life. I happen to know that the company that put this system in, you can't get parts anymore. Um, so it's, it's a bit of a difficult um, uh, system. If it crashes, we would have uh, quite a bit of a problem. Uh, it's not cheap. It's roughly eighty thousand to replace what we have. And, and we're talking quite a bit, maybe three hundred thousand if we put a phone in every classroom. So this might be something that we would do in pieces um, uh, instead of maybe all at once. Uh, LED lighting at the high school and middle school. So um, some of you are familiar that as every year lighting gets better. It's like many other things in technology. It gets cheaper, it gets more efficient. And um, I have a lot of experience with LED lighting, replacing lighting. And it does quite rapidly come to a point where you can replace it again. Our state legislator, legislative bodies have helped us out a little bit with ways that we can kind of sort of lease purchase. Uh, LED lighting, like I talked about before. And these figures give you again, a range of what it would cost at the high school, the middle school. And then the savings we would realize. So for example, the high school. If it costs roughly two hundred thousand dollars, we're going to save about twenty seven thousand on cost, electric cost in a year. And it would take about seven or eight years to realize that savings. Uh, so that's, that's a, a part of something we could do. We're not quite done paying off the last LED project. So that, this might be something we would want to wait, uh, wait on. Uh, the high school roof, um, some folks know we, we had extensive looking at that roof. We had a flyover that does um, scans of that roof. Um, unfortunately, that roof is in bad shape. So uh, we're talking, you know, two and a half million at the low end, almost three million at the high end. To really, really fix that roof. Let, let me say again, you know, I've experienced with, at school district with buildings that were a hundred and twenty years old. And experienced with buildings that were brand new that we built while I was there. Roofs in Ohio on school, school buildings are very difficult to deal with. Uh, roofs give you problems. Um, so I wasn't totally surprised about our high school roof. Um, this doesn't have to all be done in one shot. It's uh, could be pieced out, prioritized, um, so on and so forth. And then one more thing I added there, kind of a, as an end note, um, I just wanted to put this in there. Um, you know, I'm, I'm a big supporter of children and athletics are incredibly important to us. They've been important to me in my life, but so as the fine arts. Um, our auditorium is, is uh, hasn't been updated. It has the original seats. Um, it needs a lot of work. Um, the HVAC in there doesn't move the air around. Many of you know this. And uh, so I asked Plug Smart if they would talk to me a little bit about upgrading. There aren't easy fixes. So I just, I'm not saying this is something we need to do now. But I wanted you to be aware that um, you know, we're looking at four hundred thousand, a little more, a little less, just an HVAC. Then we would have to talk about seats, um, updating, lighting and sound, those types of things. So. But I would be remiss if I didn't mention the auditorium because our kids that are involved in fine arts need that space. And then we, we could use that space for bigger meetings, for gatherings. Um, and it's, it's not that it's unusable, but it's, it's getting to the point where it's, it's um, kind of in bad shape. So I think we should be aware. Um, so. Uh, let me say a couple more things and then maybe we can have some general questions. Remember, these are just estimates. So that doesn't mean that we have, you know, every piece of information. But again, if we don't start talking about this, we're not going to be able to do things in a timely manner. So when you start to talk about construction, now would be the time that we talk about the summer. And the reason that, that we do that is because. Once we go through all the motions, everybody gets to ask the questions they have. Then if Plug Smart ends up being our company, they will have to go out subcontract with folks again. Line people up because remember, schools operate on windows of time. So our best window of time is the summer. So um, we would have to be every step of the way preparing for, we're ready for the summer, we're ready for the summer. And when you do that, you get way less surprises. The Plug Smart did a great job with Marlboro. They did that, I think you started in February. So they did an amazing job. We know behind the scenes, Will might be chuckling a little bit. Scott, there were some, there were some issues. Couple that I didn't even know about till, till it passed us by. So uh, we have to be ready. So um, if you were going to ask me, um, you know, what do I think? I'm, I'm going to be totally honest and frank with you. I think the board should consider remodeling both of our remaining elementaries. Uh, this coming summer at the same time. Now, why, why do I tell you that? Couple of reasons. Um, there will be some buying power in doing two buildings at once. I don't think we can put a number to that tonight, but we can put a number to that. We want, right now, um, our nation is in a weird spot with the coronavirus. We want to make sure that local people are working. And uh, and Marlboro was done by mostly local people that we contracted with. So it's a good time that, to do this. It's a good time in the economy. And we've got, you know, a, a very incredibly, if the board chooses to do a lease purchase. You've got an incredibly low uh, amount, interest amount. Um, so I think that project is on the forefront. And then we're going to have three buildings that are more um, comparable to each other. Um, for all of our elementary age children. So um, the, the, the uh, parts of this that are smaller, the fob access, the phone system. I can work with the board on those things. Um, where might we get the money for those things? How would we handle those things? Um, and then again, like I said, the roof, uh, the high school is something we're going to have to have big discussions about. How do we want to do it? And then again, the high school, that the uh, LED lighting would be something that on our mind. We're going to continue to do LED lighting when the time is right, but not right now probably. And then um, we would, you know, when, when can we do the high school auditorium? That needs to be on your mind. That seed has to be planted. So kind of a, a little timeline that, you know, it's not carved in stone. But tonight, I'm just introducing uh, to you. Uh, the fifteenth of October, we would discuss a little bit more in depth. I would be giving more information to you between now and then. Um, more specifically, what are the needs? Uh, the November fifth, we would have more questions asked about the project, about the scope. We would by this time have met with the bank. Uh, we have a couple of local banks that are doing these types of things. And we will have an answer um, from the bank. And then, you know, possibly by right before Thanksgiving, possibly a vote. Because once again, remember, we want to get the best opportunities to line up the best subcontractors. Uh, get the best deals, get our orders in. Right now, there are certain things that are hard to order because of the virus that's going on globally. So. That's a lot. That's a lot. I don't think any of this is a huge surprise to anybody. But this is what I think from my experience. This is what's, what's kind of in my thought process. So um, I'm going to pause there and see if there are general questions that I can answer. Or Will from Plug Smart or Scott from Plug Smart, or maybe even Patty could answer.
I have a few questions.
Okay.
I think, I think you're going to be able to answer most, most of them for me, but uh, we'll see. Um, on that, um, let's see here. Open this up here. On the lease purchase agreement, is that a fixed or variable rate? Do you know?
It's a fixed rate.
Okay. Um, also on the fob access to the buildings. Is that something potentially you think that we could use some of the coronavirus relief funds for?
Right now, the answer to that is no. Now, there, there may be another round of, of, um, but. Right now, and I, I don't think Patty, if you, if you think otherwise, Patty jump in, but right now, no.
Okay.
I agree.
And on the uh, the phone system, is that, is that, does that pricing include for all the buildings or is that for specific buildings?
So the approximately eighty thousand, and remember, we would have to get that, you know, estimated again. That's all the buildings, but those are just, for lack of a better word, office phones everywhere we have the system now. The offices, that would not include a phone in every classroom, but every building. We connect with that.
But is that pricing for the phones in all the classrooms? Is that it? All the buildings?
That's all the buildings.
I, I did, I was just looking at the savings on the LED lighting for the middle school. Is that over what we've already, what, you know, what we're already saving with some of the new LED upgrades that we've already made?
I'm going to answer that and then Will or Scott, if you want to jump in, um, you can. I'm going to say yes, because LED lighting, it just exponentially keeps getting better. But Will or Scott, did you want to answer to that?
Yeah, I can weigh in. Um, that, that savings is based off the existing bulbs that were installed as part of the House Bill two sixty four project we did. So those are savings in addition to what you're already saying. Yeah, we didn't use like a, a standard wattage bulb. We used the actual bulbs that were installed last time for the comparison.
Okay, all right, um. That's, that's what I've got for right now. Anybody else?
Yeah, Mike, some questions on uh, Lexington and Washington. Uh, the, the numbers came from Plug Smart. That doesn't include anything with the foundations, correct?
I'm going to say yes, Will. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, you're correct. The, as far as like tuck pointing or I know some of the concerns that were brought up last time, that would not be included as part of that price. And also another one, Mike, that we've been, we've been, our, we, it's been mentioned in the past is the septic system at Lexington.
That one, I don't know. Will or Scott, do you know anything about the septic?
No, that, that would be outside of our scope of work.
That one, Dr. Mace, now I'll get you some answers on that. Those of you who have a septic system at home know that that can be a huge expense to take care of and replace. And so if you imagine for a school, so we'll, we'll check on that.
I think in the past, the, the number was around five million, but I could be off on that. Um, I, I think, I, I would just say the broader questions, I think that we need to be ans- be answering or, or thinking about at the same time, I should say. Is really the priorities. Is it, I mean, if we're prioritized elementaries. Um, I'm just not quite sure how we can do anything with the high school uh, roof. It, I'm very concerned about the finances. I've been saying this. We're spending, um, we put a lot of money into a building we didn't need. And so now we have to try to find that money, um, not like we're, money is rolling in everywhere anyway. Um, so budget considerations are really going to have to be looked at, of course. Um, I think we should have for next time that we have the exact total for the Marlboro repairs. And um, if there are any future concerns at Marlboro, I know we had the windows and that fob information is, is already in these um, estimates. But if there are any other future concerns we have that might have to be addressed at Marlboro. Um, and just overall, you know, what this could cost. I know um, there's been a lot of vocalization about not wanting to use lease purchase plans. Um, and so I, I don't know if that's going to be a possibility. Um, by, I mean, I think Carolyn has mentioned a lot of um, some not wanting to do that. I could be wrong on that, but I've heard that in the past. So I think that's something that's uh, going to be, have to really be explored. Um, I saw on the original uh, sheet that you had sent out that, you know, you had listed an interest amount. Um, over that of ten years on a lease purchase option of seven hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. On that ten year uh, payment plan. And that is a ton of money, obviously. Um, so I don't, we just, we have to have a lot of careful consideration about this. And um, I'm not sure that we're going to be able to do that in the timeframe. Um, without knowing really what's going on with the five year forecast. And being able to really assimilate that and learn what's going on there. So um, I'm, I'm concerned a little bit about the timeline, truthfully. I think maybe we need to take a little longer than that before we move forward with anything.
I think those are all great concerns. Um, let, I, I think I, the best thing that I can probably do is get you some very sound information on the lease purchase. So in my mind, if we're going to do them both at the same time, we're, I, I don't see any other way. But a lease purchase or the ugly word, the levy for that, if we do them at the same time. Um, the district has committed nexus money to these projects, to the Washington and Lexington. I'm just a little hesitant with Lex, or with uh, the pipeline being tied up in court. Um, nobody knows exactly what's going to happen with that money. So I want to be careful about, you know, we're not really sure how much we're going to get. Um, and I, you know, I share your concerns as well about uh, budget and where will money come from. Uh, the, I can tell you this, that uh, the other district. Um, that I talked with, the two point two would lower that amount of interest that I talked when we thought it was going to be more like three percent. And the bank that did their lease purchase did do that lease purchase. They felt that they would get enough nexus money to go ahead and do that. So, and I can tell you more about that, um, that particular school district, you know, in the, in the future. I can gather more information on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I, I agree. I think we need to get an update on our finances to see where we're at, to move forward on this. Um, just because the disparity between the last two uh, five year forecasts. Um, that definitely would help making the decision. As well as uh, Patty's input on, you know, her recommendation, whether, you know, that's going to put us into. Um, fiscal watch or, or any issues like that, you know, going forward with these types of projects.
I agree. I would like to see Dr. Maine's um, five year forecast as well, just to see what we're looking at with the more updated view of the comparison. And also her opinion on what would be best for the districts.
Patty, um, could you speak to when um, the five year forecast might be uh, available? Last year, I think we had until um, November to get that done. Is that going to be the same this year or we're looking at October?
We're looking at the end of November again. Um, yeah, we're looking at having it uh, to the board for a vote on um, the presentation on the nineteenth. Before that.
Okay, so for us to be uh, making a decision, we'll be, we'll be having this financial information available to help us with this decision as well. Is that correct?
Yes.
The five year forecast information. And then um, the nexus money, um. Are we getting the thirty eight percent of what was projected um, through this fiscal year? Or what's um, the figures you're seeing on that?
With conversations with the county auditor, um, we are looking that he. We're being advised to um, budget according to ninety percent of our last figures. So um, this year it was about one point six. So you'll see that, and I need to have some more discussion with him. So we're going to look somewhere in 1.4, 1.6.
Okay. And then we don't know the time, NEXUS timeframe within the court as far as when, I know they have a hearing in May.
Correct.
And then depending on what comes from that, there's a possibility of yet another appeal on the part.
Correct.
So some of that money could be tied up, but not, not the portion we're speaking about, right? The 1.4 to 1.6 million is not the portion that's going to be tied up in court.
Like I said, we haven't gotten any word on that yet. We're still in discussion, but, but he feels comfortable with telling us to, to at least predict 90% of that. So yes.
Okay. And do you have the information on our current lease purchase that we have with the House Bill 264 lighting? Where we are in that agreement or contract?
Yes, our, let's see. I should have had it at my fingertips. I apologize. I know that our last payment will be in 2024. I can get that for you.
Okay, that's fine. And is that elementary schools, or is that all the buildings?
Dr. Mike, do you want to join in? I believe it was throughout the district, but I could be wrong. I'm still trying to.
No, I'm not 100% sure on that one.
Okay, that's fine. I was just curious on that. And on the lease purchase, I mean, obviously, I think all of us would prefer to be able to move forward with the projects without having to borrow money, but we also have to look out for what's best for our buildings, what's best for our students and our, our staff. Is ten years the minimum number of years you can go on a lease purchase?
So I think that's a discussion we need to have with the bank. I don't know that they'll go any less than that. I don't know. We'll have to talk with them about that.
Okay.
I'd also like to, touching base on the idea of the lease purchase agreement. We currently have other lease purchase agreements on smaller, smaller terms, correct? Okay, and I think some of the concern lease purchase agreements, at least in recent history, has been due to, I think, the previous course for the consolidated elementary, and I think most of the concern with that lease purchase agreement idea was the the quantity of money in that lease purchase was quite a bit more, and it was actually considered a high risk, and it would have, due to it being considered a high risk, it would have had a much higher interest rate as well. And I think the concern with that was as well, it was depending on, largely on pretty much most of our funding from NEXUS, as well as our permanent improvement levy money, plus possibly other monies. And it didn't leave much space for anything else as far as, you know, NEXUS being challenged, which it has been. So I think that was most of the issue with the lease purchase at that time. I think with this amount, we're, it's much more manageable. So just wanted to put that out there.
Good thoughts.
Yeah, I agree with that perspective as well. Did I hear you say that the economy of scale savings with doing two projects at once, there would be some, and you're going to work on putting those figures together so we could consider consider that a savings versus what possibly the interest would cost us?
Maybe one of the guys from Plug Smart could.
Scott didn't want to.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
I was just saying, they probably have a better idea of how much cost rises on materials and everything from year to year, and they could probably give us some on that.
Yeah. And we can do an analysis like that for future board meetings when we have the meeting to kind of talk about it in more detail. We'll start reaching out to some of our suppliers, but I would also say it's twofold. It's not just the economies of scale of being able to do both projects at once. It would also be the savings from doing them upfront versus delaying them down, you know, year over year, because with each passing year, we inevitably see material pricing increases, and depending on what's happening in the labor market, especially with construction right now, as I'm sure, you know, everyone's aware, there's challenges even just getting two-by-fours and things like that. So there's additional savings just from doing it now versus pushing it down the road as well, but we can quantify that.
Okay. Dr. Mike, I appreciate you pulling all this information together to give us an overview. I think it's very helpful and helps us think short-term as well as long-term, and look at all our needs and and help us with developing a plan. I think it's a very good report.
Thank you. My pleasure. Lot of information, and we'll, we'll take it one step at a time and get the answers you need.
Yeah, I think, I think this is working out pretty well, and I'd like to not just make a decision what we're going to do right now, but have a timeframe for all of the items listed here and be able to say, we're planning on getting to this one in two years, six months. You know, we can prepare for each one of those item lists.
Sounds like a good plan.
Are there any other questions or discussion on the facilities? I want to thank again both Will and Scott for participating in the discussion with the facilities and presenting the storybook. That was a very good story. We like that.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion of board committee appointments. When we set up our committees a few months ago, I did not appoint the chairperson for the committee, so I want to run down through those and name the chairperson. For policy, be Mrs. Gabriel, curriculum, Mrs. Humphries, finance, Mrs. Gabriel, building and grounds, Mr. Hagan, and extracurricular, Dr. Mason. And then moving to Stark County ESC Legal Services Resolution. Dr. Mike, do you want to present the ESC Legal Services Resolution?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Gabriel. So what this resolution actually means is the board has a different attorney from the one that most of Stark uses, and that's fine, board's decision. But we talked with our attorney, we talked with the, I talked with the superintendent at the ESC. We want to make sure that Marlboro doesn't miss any updates or general information handouts. So this, this is just the board letting me and somewhat Patty May know we can get those updates, we can get those. We're still part of the ESC. We're still part of their services, and this is not going to cost us anything. So really, that's what that legal resolution means.
Is there a motion to accept the Stark County ESC Legal Resolution as presented on your agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I just want to say that I understand Mrs. Slick's position here. I mean, this, the board majority made it clear that they didn't want anything to do with her. So I understand why she would think that she didn't have to provide these. Obviously, we want Dr. Mike to have the updates, whatever is possible, but this is just, again, to me, is another thing that needed to be done to fix something that happened because something else took place that shouldn't have. So it's a disappointment that once again, we're fixing something that wouldn't have had to be fixed.
Is there any further discussion or questions? And again, I mean, Marlington has maintained their relationship with the Stark County ESC. Our funds go to the Stark County ESC, and with that, we, Dr. Mike is going to be able to receive these updates that we're not sure exactly why he wasn't getting them, but this will enable him to get them easier and and be able to have what he needs, as well as I think you can be part of the meetings that they're having as well. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Abstain.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved. Four, one abstaining.
Okay, and then the, this last piece on my part for this section. Obviously, we had to update our Duke's Digital Handbook. I want to commend Mrs. Sutton. She's leading our digital academy and the folks working there. It's like having another school. Even though we've had some students come back, there's still roughly 400 students in our digital academy. So we had to make sure, it was a good time to clarify, update. So her team worked on that, and I have that for you tonight. I have to say, I mean, there are humongous changes. We did give the offer the option for the $25 insurance for our younger children that wasn't, you know, in the plan before, and, you know, if I was a parent, I think that's an amazing thing the district is doing. So, but just little pieces to that. So I have that for you. You had that to look over, so I'd like you to approve that tonight.
Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for the Duke's Digital Handbook as amended?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll. Yes?
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved. Five-one, or five-zero, sorry.
The treasurer's agenda, Dr. Patty May.
I have three items tonight. The first one is a fund-to-fund transfer. It's just a recommendation for a motion for a fund-to-fund cash transfer from our OO1 General Fund to OO70 Capital Projects. This was our first part of our taxes. The first one was back in May, 730,196.95, and then the second transfer was 111,807.10 since in June. These have already been transferred.
Is there a motion to approve the treasurer's recommendation for the fund-to-fund transfer?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Patty, I just want to clarify, this is for the NEXUS funds. Is that correct? Only transferring the NEXUS funds that you received on those two? Okay.
Correct.
Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved. Five-zero. The next one is a fund-to-fund transfer. This is for the second part of our NEXUS taxes. There's a motion for, for a transfer from OO1 General Fund to OO70, the Capital Projects NEXUS. Again, these are the next NEXUS funds for the FY21 in the amount of 842,004, and that will be transferred this month, October 2020.
I'm out.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to mention that there was a resolution passed by the board two, two or three years ago for the NEXUS money to be transferred into the Capital Projects Fund, and then it was discovered that there was additional additional action needed taken by the board to actually move the money. Is that correct, Patty?
Correct.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved, five-zero. The last item I have on the agenda is to recommend the motion to approve the district purchase for public Wi-Fi infrastructure, and these are additional access points. This is through Lake Tech. The quote 21138 is attached in the amount of 90,486.26. These will be paid by our broadband grant, which we approved during the last board meeting.
Is there a motion to approve the treasurer's recommendation for the purchase of the public Wi-Fi infrastructure through the grant?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Miss, Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved, five-zero.
Personnel consent agenda, Dr. Mike?
Okay, good evening again. Just a couple of personnel recommendations for you. Under classified resignations and retirements, Linda Carnes came and talked to me, elementary head cook at Lexington. Originally, you approved her retirement for December, but she would like to remain until June. That's going to benefit her a little bit more in retirement, and I'll tell you, it's going to benefit us because she's a great lady, number one. And number two, because we won't have to replace her in the middle of the year. So I'm asking you to let her do that. It's fine with me. It's more than, so. And then Len, our head mechanic, is retiring March 19th. So we have his resignation for retirement purposes. And then Carrie Horning, who's one of our bus drivers, is resigning effective October 2nd. But then the next item, Patty Peterson, some of you know Patty will be returning to us as a driver. We're happy. It's hard to get bus drivers. We need bus drivers. Classified subs, we have three people there, Jill Ginther, Heather Rice, and Pam Kraft. And then our supplemental, we have one there. A libertor will be a boys' basketball. He'll be 0.66 of that stipend. And I believe, yeah, that's all the personnel.
Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for personnel?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved. Five-zero.
Announcements? Does anyone have any announcements?
I would just like to say a quick thank you again to all of our staff that made everything possible for Marlboro to get opened and hit the ground running as it did. I know that that was a lot for our staff to take on, and I just want to say thank you for that. And also a shout out to all of our staff members. We're doing such a great job with teaching in uncertain times as it is and just making such a great impact for our kids. It's been awesome to hear what's going on from the community members. And everyone seems very grateful for how we have handled things and how the staff is doing. So thank you again.
All right, the next board meeting will be October 15th at 7:00 PM. And the last item, Marlington in motion, opportunities for improvement, comments moving forward. This open to, open the floor for any comments or discussion.
I've been hearing, go ahead.
Good, Karen, good.
I've been hearing from parents asking about our meeting in person again. And I don't even know where we're at with the restrictions from the government, governor, if we're still at the end meeting thing. But I just wanted to point that out again, especially since we're doing these recognitions of the students. You know, it would be much nicer in person. And then they're able to, normally the principals give that little paragraph about the student and talk about it. And that would be a nice experience for them to have when they've had so little of that experience lately. And I also wanted to ask, Dr. Mee, have we received an attorney Markling?
No, we haven't.
I would again like to ask that, those bills are sent monthly. We're now like in month four since June. And in the interest of transparency, that we hear that we want to be transparent, I think that's a really good thing, if we would have a bill from him monthly. So we can keep better track of the expense that it is, that we are paying. So I again am asking for that to take place. And I don't know if, maybe we need to make a board resolution asking him to do that. But I don't, I mean, I would think that just my asking would be able to accomplish that. But apparently that doesn't work. So again, I'm asking for that.
I'll just make a comment on the meetings, the face-to-face meetings, Karen. It's my understanding that the limit is still 10 so that with board members and support, we would be limited primarily just to the board and the support, the IT support that we have for that. So that's where we are with that. And I do agree, it would be nicer to recognize our students in person. But, and hopefully we'll be able to do that soon, once the restrictions are lifted. And then I guess as far as vendors and billings and that sort of thing, Dr. Mee, if you could just reassure us that you have things in place and you're overseeing things with your job to make sure that, you know, you're getting invoices from everyone and that you're following up and that we don't need to worry about it.
Yes, I will check on those invoices and I will follow up on those. And I will let you know where we're at with that.
Okay, and you do that with all the vendors then? I'm assuming rather than singling out a single one, you have protocol where you, that you follow with, following up with various vendors?
Um, I, I can't tell you, I'll have to get back to you on that.
Okay.
I don't, yeah, I'll have to get back to you on that, okay?
Yeah, I mean.
The concern is the amount of money that this is costing. That's why it's a higher amount of money. This is not just a, and most people I'm sure are billing, they want to be paid. It doesn't make sense. So I think that's a transparent thing to do.
I don't think we need to pay the bill until we receive it. So, I mean.
But it makes it harder to really see what really went, what transpired because there are a lot of things happening. And depending on the hours that we're being billed, that's the transparent thing. We should be able to see what we're being billed for and recognize, yes, that did happen this month. When you get a bill that goes over three, four months, it's hard to remember, really, did all that happen? How did that happen? There could be mistakes in it. And it's, that's the responsible thing with taxpayer dollars, to know exactly what we're paying. This is not.
I'm going to put my confidence that Patty will be reconciling all of our invoices as she receives them and paying the bills.
That's not Patty's responsibility as far as knowing exactly what is being billed by a vendor. I mean, she, it's her job to process it, but she's not involved in everything that is being done with the attorney. I'm kind of surprised, Carolyn, that you're not wanting this transparency. This is not, this is not out of hand, asking for this.
Dr. Mike, is there any marketing to, you know, more frequent, you know, monthly invoices? So we don't have this issue?
I think we did request that about a month ago.
Okay.
Correct, Dr. Mee?
Yes, I will, I will request that again.
Did you, what Josh is asking, did you already request that?
I did, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Hopefully get that resolved and it's not a recurring thing.
I will work on that.
I have a question. Can't we recognize the students virtually?
We just did.
Have them, have, send them an invitation, have them come on, and the principal can be on. And we can do that virtually. If we're going to have virtual meetings, we can have them be there virtually with their parents. If, I mean, they're all doing some sort of online learning, so it's a possibility.
Yeah, sure, let's look, let's look at that. We did talk about having one principal of the month to, or one principal each month on. But sure, let's look and see if we can do that.
And then my second question is for you, Dr. Mike. It's our COVID, what do we call it, dashboard? Will that, where will that be for the public to see?
The COVID dashboard is, you go to the website, Parents, and then COVID. And we're going to, it's, the dashboard is there. And then we're going to post that on our Facebook and on our, maybe even a call out so that people know. We're adding information often to that so that people know that. So we will, we'll take care of that, make sure people know.
Thanks, Ben.
Yeah, Ben's putting it up. Yeah, Parents, COVID resources. And the dashboard.
All right, perfect.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very helpful. Have we sent a email out to parents, letting them know that the dashboard's available?
I don't know that we've sent an email to everybody, but we're going to do that as what we call the all-call. I forget if you call it the one-call system here, but you know, the system where I can email everybody or talk to everybody. So we'll do one or the other or both.
Okay.
Thanks, Frank. And thank you, Ben.
On another topic, I think we've got room for improvement as far as communications. I've had people getting, but not emails. Who should I direct them to so that they can get that resolved for update?
You cut out, Mr. Hagan, I didn't hear what you said.
Oh, I said, we have room for improvement as far as communications go with the district. I've had parents tell me that, you know, they're receiving some, but not others. They're getting text updates, letting them know that they've received an email, and they're not getting the emails. Should they contact their local building administrators or someone in the administration office? What's the best route for them to get that, that resolved?
I think the principal's the best route because they have some control over that. But anybody's welcome to call my office too. So either one, we'll solve it together.
Okay.
Dr. Mike, I can speak to that a little bit.
Okay.
So what we found, and we find every year when we get back to school, that parents sometimes forget to update their email addresses in our Home Access Center or with the office when they just roll over their forms from year to year. They forget, oh, I changed my email address in the winter. And they think everything's the same when they roll over those forms. And then we send them an email and follow up with a phone call, and they didn't get an email. And then when we go in and find, oh no, that's not the email. I'm not using that email anymore. So that's the best way, is if they just update that information. And then our all-call system and our email information pulls from a very specific place in our student information system. So they want to make sure that they verify that with the building secretary. That we would verify that with.
I was just going to ask you, is once they update it, is there any way they could test it to make sure that they're getting them? So they don't just have to wait until, you know, they found out they're still not receiving?
Right, right. That's a good, that's a good question, so, yeah.
We had some way, you know, automated that, that they could do that.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Dr. Mike, I have heard that there are community members that would like to see our E. Travis Unam Shield restored to the site of our high school. It was there for many, many years, up until fairly recently. And we're, I'm not sure what happened to that. But if that's something you could do in your spare time, research that. And, or if, or if it was damaged and possibly we could maybe look into having a new one.
Okay, I'll find it or find out what happened to it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, one other point I think we look at is trips such as the, they're not field trips per se, but trips that, just recently, we had one with the cheerleaders and the band. And then there was a confusion with at least one parent wanting to get more information. I think the board needs to discuss whether we want to have those types of field trips, even though they're not transporting with the schools. Us is, if we want to have stuff like that, you know, run by the administration and the board, just to prevent confusion from parents. If everybody's not on the same page, it can lead to quite a bit of confusion.
I think we do need some discussion on that. So I'm going to prepare some information for board members. I need to look at our board policy too a little bit. So we will, point well taken, we'll look at that.
All right, thank you.
Is there any other discussion, comments, questions? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Gabrick?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved five zero.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Thanks, thanks for coming, everybody. Good night.